Greetings, folks. This is Brian Harris with the Independent Black Voters. Our vote is not free. We are continuing our series of "Let's Get to Know the Candidates," and today I'm proud to have Ms. Tamika Henry here. She is running for school board, district, school board trustee, District C. This is one that is very important and dear and dear to my heart because if you know the history of the school board, right now, there has been one African American that has sat on the board in the past, and that was Dr. Young. She has been termed out, and now there will be a decision to be made by the community on who will be the next school board trustee. It's very important that we are educated voters. It's very important that we are engaged voters because what happens here in November will affect the way your kids are treated. It will affect whether the change that we need comes. So I challenge everybody to take the minute here and listen to Ms. Tamika Henry as we discuss issues about the school board and we discuss why she is running for this position. So without any further ado, Ms. Henry, I thank you for taking the time to come over and talk with the independent black voters.
No worries. Thank you, Mr. Brian, for providing this platform. I appreciate you as well.
Okay, so now tell us, tell us a little bit about yourself, a little bit about you. So those who don't know you will now know you. Tell us a little bit of why you decided to run for the school board.
All right, so again, everybody, I'm Tamika Henry. I'm a mother of four. I'm a wife, and I'm a, I'm a very concerned community member, concerned about our school district. I am running because I believe that all children deserve access to high-quality education. I've looked at the data from our district. The 51 schools in my district deserve, deserve all the resources that they need. We've seen that it's not equitable access to these resources, especially during this pandemic. I've been advocating for high-quality education for over a decade as the chairperson of the Board of Directors for Ossolero Learning Head Start. You know, I know that preschool and early childhood education is so very important, and we prepare our kids for the school district, and oftentimes, the school district isn't prepared for our children. So that's why I am running for school board trustee in District C, to make sure that we have strong representation from our community, to also just the relationships that I do have throughout the community, to make sure that we have stronger collaborations for the best outcomes for children, but also just to advocate and fight for the necessary resources that are needed for our students. So that's why I'm running, very passionate about this, and I'm prepared to do it.
Great, great. And you know, it's interesting because I'm doing actually interviews with as many of the school board members as we can, and I just finished talking to Ms. Guzman, and we talked about a lot of issues that we're going to talk about here. We are the Independent Black Voters, so we focus on the issues prevalent to the black community. We believe if we focus on those issues, everybody, the tide will rise for everybody. But we're here to talk about issues that are prevalent in the black community and why we need to have good, strong representation from our community if we are going to succeed. There are many problems with, there are many problems with the school board, with the school system right now. From an educational aspect, we have, we really have two different school systems. We have the haves and the have-nothing. We have one group that is literally, I live in Henderson. We have pretty decent school educational systems here. Everybody has Chromebooks. When this whole pandemic went out, they were able to take theirs home. I've also worked in the school systems over in your district, Swanagin to be one of them. And you go in there, everybody does not. It seems like a room has a Chromebook and they're locked up most of the time. So when the pandemic came, they weren't even able to send them home with the sufficient amount of books. Now, this is what a part of systemic racism. This is a part of the whole issue we're fighting for today is equal access, equal opportunity, both from an educational and from an economic thought part. So there's a lot that has to get done. I use that example, so I'll let you now go for it. Tell me what you've seen and what you think.
Of course, I've absolutely seen the same thing. So I'm a product of the school district. I was born and raised here. My children have attended school in District C, all of them. And, you know, I could tell the difference between, my daughter attends a magnet school, and they were already equipped, it's a STEM academy, and they were already equipped, all of the students already had access to technology, where we would come home and students that live right across the street who attend the neighborhood schools did not. That's a problem. That's a problem for me and for them. Like, we, everybody deserves access to these resources if we're going to have, again, the best outcomes for children. And so our district, we know that it's lacking. It's been lacking for decades, and we have to, we have to do better. Family structures are different. There are grandparents who are raising children who, they need these resources. But also with that, once you get the resources, someone needs to provide the trainings to make sure that they know what they're doing with them. You know, we can give them Chromebooks, but if they can't even get on the internet, they don't have access to it at home, then what's the point? So it all has to work together, and it's going to take all of us, I know that the school district can't do it alone, but it's going to take those strong collaborations with, with businesses, with community groups, to make sure that this happens. So yes, it's something that I'm absolutely, absolutely ready to fight for. But again, I can't do it alone, and I'm going to be leaning on our community for backing as well.
Okay, great. Now, let me ask you this question, and I do this in the school side to understand. I'm a product of Gary, of Gary, Indiana. I went to a predominantly black school called Gary Roosevelt, the Black, the Panthers, the Veldt Don't Melt. I graduated from there and went forward to Purdue University, received an undergrad in electrical engineering technology, went to work in corporate America, came back and got my MBA from Purdue University. The one big thing that I can say, growing up in Gary, Indiana, the majority of the teachers looked like me. The majority of teachers lived in my community. The majority of people, of teachers loved us unconditionally, even when they beat your butt, they loved you. And I believe that my success, I believe that my beliefs and confidence in myself come from the fact of I grew up with very strong black role models. I believe that the school system has a problem, that they need to go out and actively hire people that look like me throughout the district from all levels of this business. Because the school is effectively a billion-dollar business. It is, it may be a school per se, we talk a lot about kids, but the truth of the matter is, it is a business, and disproportionately, the amount of African Americans involved in this business, I believe, also affects black students. Because if you never see anybody that looks like you unless they're the dean giving out punishment, or the janitor, and no disrespect to the janitors because they're great people, but if you don't see people in positions of authority, in position of decision-making, you lose the, to me, the insight of what you can be. So what do you think on that statement?
Right. I do feel that we do need more representation at the administrative level. I've heard from many, I've heard from many who have tried to become principals, who have, for some reason or another, been shut out of the process, and that's not okay. That's, that's not okay. Like, we need to have leaders who look like the students that are in the community, that are in those buildings. And I think that is, I think that is unfair when people take those extra steps and they further their education, and they get, you know, they get the doctorates that they need. And that's not even a requirement. That's not even a requirement to become a principal. But you took those extra steps and you got your doctorate, and you still, you're still not good enough? Why?
It's called systemic racism.
Yes. And together, we have to bring, you know, just really start holding, really start holding the district accountable for that.
And that's why it's important to get the right people into the school board, not just in, in C. One of the things, and I give my hats off to Dr. Young. She was fighting with one hand behind her back because there's always been one of her and seven of everybody else. So even if you're looking for help and fair and equitable help for your district, everybody was looking out for their district and didn't care about your district. I see a trend coming now where there's a attempt to bring together the school board members that are like-minded and understand that the school is only as strong as its weakest link. So that's a good, a good place to be, and I want to say, Tracy, how welcome. We have Tracy on, and she's part of my team here now as we vet out the candidates that are running for both school board and region. How you doing, Tracy?
Hi, good morning. I'm sorry.
No, no.
Technology.
Good morning, Ms. Tracy.
Hi, sweetie. How are you?
I'm doing well, thank you.
Okay, so where were we? We were talking about that, the issue of systemic racism and the need to put a team together of school board members. So it's not Tamika against the world. It's a group of like-minded school board members that understand the school system is only as strong as its weakest link. And they have to not just worry about, well, my, my district has theirs, so I don't care about yours. So tell me what you think there.
Yeah, you can't be that way, because although you are a representative, elected by your constituents, and yes, you got to advocate for what's needed in your district, we all know that it takes at least four of those votes to make things happen, and building relationships with the rest of the board, and letting them know, you know, not only your feelings, but also bringing data to back that. You know, bringing the data to back, like, why is this the right decision to make on behalf of, of not only my district, but the entire district? Because if District C thrives, and if District, if District C thrives and starts making greater outcomes, it's going to be greater for the entire district, right? And they should know, like, I think that it's important to not only do tours within your district to see, you know, what the positives are, but also what's lacking. But it's also important for the other board members to see what's going on in the other districts as well. So when they're making decisions, it's not just based on word of mouth, like, you've seen it for yourself. You know that your schools have all the technology that they need, all the resources that they need. You know, the buildings are, the buildings are top-notch. But if you come and visit my buildings, especially on a rainy day, you'll see that the roof is leaking. You know, technology is being ruined. The technology that we do have is being ruined because the infrastructure of the building is deteriorating. You know, I can tell you that, but if you see it for yourself, you know, I'm hoping that that will help you to make an informed decision about, you know, the district as a whole. So, yeah.
And let me tell you, yeah, Ms. Henry, we're going to have a series of discussions with you because I think we'd be in here for hours and hours, and our constituents watching can only probably watch for so long. But we're going to go through here and talk about a lot of subjects, everything from substitute teachers to the drivers and fair and equity. Here's the thing that I see, and you don't have to pay me hundreds of thousands of dollars as a consultant. If you peel back the onion, why is the, is your district in so much disarray? And why, because of that, are we 51st or close to last? Well, if you look at it, I've worked in some of the systems in your district. They have the biggest need for teachers. The bulk of the substitute teachers are probably in your district, and the bulk of the, of when you can't even get substitute teachers, it's going to be in your district that they have to figure out how to run the day without having, you have no ammo in the gun. You don't have an ability to teach kids. I spent a couple of months in Swanagin, and I use that as an example because here's a middle school that had no math teacher.
Oh, my goodness.
Had no math teachers, certified math teachers for the whole semester, almost the whole year. And they were, they were basically bringing in young subs who did not look like the, like the people they were teaching, and they had fun running them out of there because they did not understand the culture. They did not. They were not qualified. They do not know how to run a classroom. Because if you are a minority in running a minority classroom, you kind of know how to run that classroom. If you are right out of college and you, you grew up in Summerlin or someplace else, and you've never experienced what goes on in these schools, you're here and gone because you're not going to deal with the issues. I proved the point by staying there for three months and saw that these kids want to learn. The bulk of them, 90% of them, want to learn, but they're in a lose-lose situation because they have the limited resources, they have the less amount of teachers. They have no, no real way to learn in the environment they're in today. So we need to think out the box. We need to do some things differently, and hopefully, Tamika, you have some thoughts on that, and, and tell me what you think about what I just said.
I do. Are you saying Swainston?
Swainston, yes.
Swainston, okay. I've been trying to figure out, what school is he from?
Swainston, yeah.
I got you.
Okay.
No, no, you bring up some very valid points, especially when it comes to substitutes. I know that our schools have a high percentage of long-term subs, and I think that subs or guest teachers are important to our school system, especially since we haven't had, we haven't hired the amount of teachers, full-time teachers that we're supposed to have. So they are important. I think that it's also going to be important that we have highly qualified subs that have the, that have the classes that you were talking about, classroom management. You know, because to become a sub, you only need 60 hours, 60 credit hours to be a sub. But does that truly prepare you to be in a classroom, especially classrooms that look like the ones that's in my, in my district? No. I think, for me, I wish that there was a program or a collaboration that the school district had with our higher learning systems to have some type of certification for highly qualified subs that, that has courses on cultural diversity, that has courses on classroom, effective classroom management.
Let me change your thought even. Hire some older retired or similar retired people from corporate America who are black that can come in, but pay them to come in and fix this problem. Because having a teacher's license means you have a teacher's license, but understanding math or the sciences, you don't have to have a teacher's license. If you have a basic understanding, a real good, strong background, engineering per se, or, or some type of science, and you can come in and teach, then put them to a contract that has performance contracts that makes it worth their while. We have to think out the box. We have to, to not just say, oh, well, or give us this plan two or three years down the road. It's not going to work, but it gives you some, that gives groundwork for people to continue business as usual. You know, a lot of the, from what we talked earlier, a lot of the principals have the power to go out and spend the money if they needed to. Well, maybe we got to start teaching them. If they want to be a CEO, then you got to fix problems, not just basically continue the same failure situation.
And that's true, and I'm willing to have more conversations around that because that's going to be, is, is going to be important. And I love just thinking outside of the box. We obviously can't continue down the same path or we're going to keep getting the same results. And so, yes, I'm very willing to continue to have that conversation with you, Brian. Solutions, you know, we got to work towards solutions.
You know what they say the definition of insanity is? To do the same thing over and over and expect to change.
Right, and we're not, I mean, in that field that that's where we have been for decades, and it's time for, you know, I'm one of those, I don't know it all, but I know people who know a lot, and I think that together, we can come up with better solutions for our school district. We've got to be willing to come together. That's the biggest part.
Absolutely. Let me tell you, I'm a big believer that this is a thing. If you look socio-economically, poverty and education go right in tune with each other. There's a direct correlation, and people will not wake up. Again, pay me as a consultant to tell you this, but it's very obvious that if we can uplift the economics of the, the families that are in your school system, then I think you would uplift the educational results in your school system. But, and that goes back to one of the other sides of the corn I like to talk about that is usually not talked about by the school board trustees, both during and even after. Black America is 13%, roughly, if you say, somewhere between 10 and 13% of the populace here in Nevada, probably closer to 13% Clark County, but here's my rub. The school system is a big billion-dollar business. They build facilities. They build, they have construction jobs. They procure, even if it's toilet paper, even if it's plastic forks or napkins or paper. They procure a lot of stuff. I'm a believer that systemic racism makes it to the point that black businesses are systematically locked out of the opportunity to be businesses that do business with the school system. I believe there should be measures that are designed to look at real diversity, not fake diversity. And I think we need a school board that makes that an issue because if you want to fix a lot of the things in the educational system, you're going to have to first start fixing a fair and equitable opportunity for the family to grow. Let's face it, a family that has roots where they own their house versus they renting their house, a family that has the ability to pay their bills without worrying about how they're going to keep the roof out of their house and be evicted, a family that has the economic opportunities in the long run will create kids or young men and young women that will be more prepared to learn and more hungry to learn. So give me your thoughts on that about the, about the equality of opportunity and a focus on trying to make sure that procurement and construction has, does not continue to lock out the black business.
Right, and I think it's only right that if businesses have positioned themselves, you know, for these opportunities, that we need to make sure that they have access to those opportunities. You know, I was, again, born and raised here, and I can remember Richardson Construction. Richardson Construction was a black-owned business that, that built many schools here in this district. And that need, that opportunity needs to be present for more businesses, and not only for construction, but like you were saying, if there are businesses that sell paper goods, we need to look to those businesses too. So making sure that those, that black business, minority business have the opportunities to, to secure those contracts is definitely something that's going to be important to me.
We, yeah, we need to have school boards that actually put teeth into diversity plans and not really just make it so they can high-five and do nothing, even to the point where a significant amount of the pay that goes maybe to the principals, to the, to the head of the school district, the superintendent, et cetera, actually is tied to their true diversity of dollars that go into their procurement. That would make them, that might kill some of the good old boy stuff that's going on right now. So I'm a big believer, and I say I need commitment from the people that we support, that they are also going to make that an issue. We cannot continue to let black America be locked out of the economic opportunities in the school board. The school system is a major player from a statewide spender of money.
Right, and also just making sure that our businesses know of the opportunities that may exist. Even when I think about those different wraparound services, or there's so many grassroots organizations and mentorship groups that are in town who, who can provide those additional services to school, to the school systems. We can't always do it complimentary. We shouldn't, we shouldn't always do it complimentary. We should be offered a seat at the table to help produce the best outcomes for children and their families. So just even, even in that, just, just making those opportunities. Like, if they, if they don't exist, maybe bringing that to the table as well.
Right. One of the things that interests me is the school board is, the school is always asking for money. But they do things, any business does a budget. And I would assume when they do their budget, they assume they're doing a budget with 100% of the teachers' spaces filled. Yet, if you look at the percentage of unfilled teachers, you know, with substitutes that are being paid maybe a fifth of what a teacher is, we should be running a surplus, not a deficit. So I always under, I question myself, where's the money going? Because something isn't right. I'm a math background, and I'm saying, you know, and I've run million-dollar businesses, and I'm like, well, when I don't have the people in the spot, spot that I assign money to, then I save that money. I should be running a, I should be running, underrunning my budget, not blowing it out the water. So I have a lot of, I have a lot of concerns, both as a taxpayer. Do we really have fiscal responsibility before you raise my taxes to pay more money to the schools? Because if you don't, all you're doing is raising my taxes to give more money to the schools with the same outcome. Your thought there?
Right, and I know that some schools had a carry, had carryover funds. But yes, I think that if, if you're not fully staffed, we know that there's money left. But how are those, how are those dollars being reallocated is what we need to look at. But more so, we really need to look at filling those slots. Like, we know, we know how important it is to have, to have teachers, full-time teachers in those slots. Like, we need those educators to, you know, so we can have those outcomes for children. But when we don't, we know that there's a carryover. Where are those dollars being reallocated to? And so I know that they have had an audit. I want to look at that audit. I want to comb through it myself. But also, at what point is it time for a forensic audit where you have someone outside truly look at where the money is being spent? You know, like you said, you, you know about money. You know that it's being, it's being carried over, but where?
Exactly.
Just need more transparency, you know, especially if you're going to be asking for more dollars. You first need to show how it was spent responsibly.
Absolutely, and that brings on a point too. Again, when you look at the way dollars are spent. Absolutely, and, and that brings on a point too, again, when you look at the way dollars are spent. Uh, give me your opinion on this because it appears that disproportionately, when we get money in. It goes to the, uh, administration and not the teachers, not the, 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 uh, substitute. Or the guest teachers or the bus drivers or all the other ancil- ancillary, uh, people that keep the schools running. It, it seems like it always ends up going more to administration to the, than to the people. Who are actually making the school system run. Uh, give me your thoughts on how, uh, or, or your thoughts on that statement. Do you agree with them? Don't you agree with them? What do you think we need to do differently?
No, I agree that, um, you know, we are, we are top heavy. Again, I wanna look at the budget, I wanna take a detailed look at the budget to see how these dollars are being spent. But the investment in children, at the end of the day, then the best investment in children is to ensure that our, um. That our classrooms have all the resources that they need and, and the first resource is a educator. So, I am in favor of making sure that money is being spent. At the levels, not at the top, like we really need to reinvest in our classrooms and getting those educators. Um, especially highly qualified educators. And those with, um, the most experience into our district classrooms. Because we can't, the long-term serves for years and years, I just. They are important, but I just don't feel like we're gonna get the outcomes that we need. So, yes, looking at, um, that administration and the top heaviness is going to be a priority. It has to.
Okay, um, let me, again, I thank you first, Tamika, again, we're the independent black voters on Facebook. So, I, I try to keep it real here. If you look at historically, again, Dr. Young was the only African American that was sitting on the board. Uh, if you win, you will continue as hot, as the only African American sitting on the board. Uh, many people don't consider that important, but many do. Because we do need a voice and we do need people that understand the black, uh, experience. Who understand the, the, the intricacies and the problems that are going on in our community. And can speak on them and fight for change. I make that as more of a statement to the folks who are watching this. That if we do not realize and vote and vote for people that we know. Will assist us, then shame on us. Uh, I, I ask a question in another minute, meaning about identity politics. And in one point, identity politics is, i- i- it's a double edged sword. Which is, has positive and negative going by it. Uh, in the case of the school board, I think we have to look at identity politics to a point. And say, we need to have someone in there that has our cultural experiences. And that understands the needs of our community. That is why, uh, I wanted to tell you that the independent black voters are, we are endorsing you, Tamika Henry. As our candidate, uh, for the general election. We believe that we, our community needs you. We believe there is too much work to be done to not have a voice. That looks like us on the school board, a voice that understands the intricacies of our community on the school board. This is an important race, folks, and I'm gonna say, uh, without a doubt. That the independent black voters and myself are planning to do what we can to help you be elected to the school board. And I'm gonna ask, uh, my other two co- counterparts here to give me their thoughts on that statement before you talk, Tamika.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, can you go ahead and repeat what you would like us to, um, reflect on?
I said that the independent black voters are supporting Tamika. Because we believe that we need to have a voice like hers on the school board. Somebody that understands our culture, somebody understands the intrinsic differences of our culture. The problems that are addressed here, not think that they understand them. That is going to give us a voice, but also listen to the community because the community has different opinions. But we definitely need to have her, so therefore the independent black voters has endorsed Tamika. For the candidate of school board trustee.
Absolutely, um, sorry for my tardiness, Miss Tamika, my name is Camila Bywaters. And it's an honor to be able to talk to you, I've been meaning to, um, I've been wanting to talk to you for a while now. And, you know, I think it is absolutely important that we have representation for our community in the educational space. Because no one understands our children, our, um, our experience more than we do, right? So, um, one of my questions for you is, um, if you are elected and we are supporting you wholeheartedly. Um, into that, into that space of trustee, what are some initiatives that you have in mind to help support and move? Um, black students forward as well as black educators, um, and specifically into leadership positions?
Right, so I think just even access, having access to those opportunities. Um, when we talk about quality education. Um, I think that there are great and amazing, um, magnet programs out here as well as CTEs. I think that, um, access for our students is very important. Um, you know, to get into those trades, not all students. Not all students want to go to college, but there are other career paths that exist. And I wanna make sure that our students have more access to those opportunities. I know that there's always like a lottery, but when I get in, I wanna know and fight for, um. Fight for our children to have more access to those. Cause I think that the numbers are, are lower than what they should be for our students. So that's number one. Um, number two, definitely looking into, um, having more administrators. Um, African American administrators hired as principals. I think that is, is important and pastime for us to have more in those very important decision-making roles. Especially in the schools within our district. Um, I believe there's thirty African American, um, high school principals, like. We need more, we have to have more, um, students and our educators. Um, deserve to have people who look like them in those positions, who are willing to make decisions, um, for those schools. So that's something that I'm also going to push for. Because if they've done everything that they're supposed to do, they, they've gone back to school. They've gotten a higher education and degrees, they've gone through the programs, um, that the district. The leadership programs that they asked for and then you're still not even, um, offered an interview. That's a problem, that's a problem, it makes no sense and it, you know, sorry. And everything goes black. Sorry about that, that's a problem. And so, that's, that's definitely something that I wanna move, move on, um, once elected into this position. Did I miss another portion? I know you said for students, for, for staff members, and was there another?
I think that was, um, that you hit pretty much all the points and, you know, I, I really last night was just. I couldn't really go to sleep because I was thinking about this, um, idea, well, not idea, but I know in the past. Um, the Clark County School District has actually had an equity and diversity department, right? And to me, it seems like, kind of like an oxymoron that we have an equity and diversity department. However, what is the function of that department, you know? And why is it that we have a department that focus, that has a focus on equity and diversity? But we really don't see the equity and diversity played out in our leadership. Um, and for me, I am totally committed to having professionals that look like. Black students, because we send a powerful message when black students are going to their schools. And we say, by showing them that leaders do not look like you, right?
Right.
And, you know, our focus is always on the children and for me, that is a big component of, um, our student education. Why do I wanna learn in a space where I can't even go to a principal who looks like me? Or, uh, you know, a superintendent who looks like me? Or, you know, a coordinator who looks like me and express how I feel about my educational experience. When, you know, that, we don't have that connection there, right? And, you know, and I do believe like when, when black people are giving this space to thrive. It, that includes everyone, right? So, um, I, I am really, um, you know, I would like to know. Um, how will you, have you thought about how you may navigate a space that may not necessarily be. Um, open and willing to, um, move forward with what you're presenting. As something that you think should be in place.
Right, and I also wanna educate myself more, you know, I wanna educate myself more on the process. So I'm not just speaking blindly, right? Um, I know that I've talked to, um, educators who have wanted to move forward and haven't been able to, for whatever reason. But I wanna familiarize myself with the process and that way when it, um. You know, we just can't allow it to continue, I, I can't allow it to continue. Like, if, if you just, just flat out denying our people, I have a big problem with that. And I'm gonna make sure to let my voice be heard, because I'm a voice coming from the community. This is feedback that's coming directly from the community and people that it has happened to. And so, we can't continue to take no for answer. Um, and, you know, it's something that I'm willing to advocate for relentlessly. And I know that it's gonna take more than me, but, I mean, it, it, it has to start with me, you know? Or, you know, it has to continue with me, I won't say. It has to continue with me because Dr. Young has done her part over the past twelve years. And it's like, you know, we, we can't continue to just have the door closed in our faces, you know?
One of the things, Camilla, we talked about earlier was the fact that what, we are doing these. And we're not just talking to the people in one district. There's unity when you have group support. Uh, the biggest problem Dr. Young dealt with was she was one of seven. And so, by putting together some type of a plan. And, and, and holding people accountable, you can make changes. You can actually turn it so the superintendents, the school sit, the boards, they are all, uh, incentivized. Uh, significantly on real diversity instead of just creating a diversity group that does nothing. Uh, you tie it to money, you get results. You tie it towards something else, you get basically excuses. So, that is really one of the reasons that in this cycle, we are not just talking to one potential school board. Uh, candidate, we're talking to all of them, because there is strength in numbers. And there is no strength if you only have one person on your team. That's why you all are here, strength in numbers.
Right, and thank you all for being here, you know, taking this time out of your Saturday morning to interview me. Um, but it's important, I like, I like to hear, you know, what your concerns are. And how we can work together to move forward. You know, um, it's unfortunate that, you know, it's always only been one, um, African American on the board. And with that, I know, um, comes great responsibility. Um, and I think that it takes someone that's willing to be vocal, it takes someone that's willing to, um, advocate. On behalf of African Americans, but I also, you know, I understand that I, that I represent more. Um, than just African Americans, but without, without having this representation on the board. I'm afraid of, I'm afraid that we will continue to be left out. And that's something that we just cannot, we cannot have. And, um, I'm willing to build relationships with the other board members. To, um, get the best results for, for my community as well. You know, just really open their eyes to what is happening. Um, maybe, maybe you don't know the statistics, you know, and, and I'm not sure how, how you wouldn't. How you wouldn't know, but it, you know, I'm just hoping that, um, to build those relationships. Um, and, and garner their, their support. To get, um, results for, for my community.
Well, Ms. Henry, uh, we thank you for taking the weekend to talk to us. Uh, I've known you in the past, but this is, I know you a little bit more today. Uh, we're gonna say this, and again, we're gonna have some other discussions with you. Because we believe that we must know our candidate. I'm inviting you, please, I'm telling every candidates, take advantage of it. Uh, if you join the independent black voters, give us a, 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 a minute rant. Uh, just tell the people who you are, tell the people your thoughts. The more they know you, the more comfortable they are to vote for you. And, and I encourage you to do that, uh, just as you are doing this, we are gonna get it out to people. Uh, to my friends who take the time to watch these videos on the Independent Black Voters Group, I thank you. I encourage you not just to watch and listen, but to share and encourage the people you share with to share with other people. We cannot win unless we understand that we are in a fight. We cannot win unless we understand that we must create unity. When we have unity, then our community will, will thrive. When we have unity, all communities will thrive. The, the independent black voters, we are trying to educate our voters. And encourage our voters to vote. If you do not vote, then you are happy with the status quo. But voting is the first step. You must do more than vote, you must vote, and you must encourage those around you to participate in the voting process. So, Ms. Henry, we're gonna let you take it home here. And give everybody your contact information and give them a first, a quick spiel on why you. Should be the school board, uh, trustee.
All right, thank you again, um, again, everybody, Tamika Henry, candidate for school board trustee. You can learn more about me and my campaign at votetamikaHenry.com. That's votetamikaHenry.com. I'm also on Facebook, um, Twitter and Instagram. I wanna thank you, Brian, and the independent black voters for, um, your endorsement. It's something that I do take near and dear to my heart. Um, I care about our community, I really do care about this district. Um, I'm, I've been advocating for education, um, from being a head side parent. I've served on the SOTs at three schools in the district. So, um, make, being a decision maker on a parent level. Along with the principals and staff members and at high schools, um, and middle schools. There's a student, um, that's also involved. Is very important to me. It's, it's important to have the voice of, you know, I was told you can't run as being a parent alone. And, you know, I'm a parent, but I'm also, um, a concerned community member. I've also served on several boards, um, here locally, um, in the state and nationally. That, um, focus on the well-being of children and families. Um, you know, everything from education, from mentorship, from paid family leave. Um, all of these things that help move our families forward. Um, so I'm really just, I'm really, I'm really just want everyone to know that, uh. I'm prepared to be a trustee on the school board. I'm prepared to be a strong advocate for our communities. Our families, our educators and support staff, um, the district as a whole. And I can't do it without receiving your support or your votes. So, please, everyone, um, just take the time to learn more about me and the campaign. So please, everyone, um, just take the time to learn more about me and the campaign. Um, if you have any questions, there is a contact button. Uh, my phone number is also listed. Please reach out to me. Because I wanna make sure, if I'm gonna say that I'm gonna represent you. I wanna make sure that I'm truly bringing your voice to the table. And in order to do that, I need to hear from you. And also being, um, being the only African-American on a board, I'm sure for Dr. Young. Um, you know, it's, it brings great pleasure, but it's also a challenge. You have to have the support of your community as well. And so I'm, I'm willing to go to bat for all of us. But I'm also, when it comes those times where we need strong representation at the board meetings. Um, I'm gonna be leaning on you as well. Because the only way we're gonna get the results that we need is if we all do this together. So this seat in this election is not just about me, it's about us. And so please reach out to me, check out the website at votetamikahenry.com. Check out the Facebook page and, and contact me so we can, um, go ahead and secure this win for our community. And again, Brian, um, Tracy, Kamla, thank you all. Thank you all so much for this, um, for this very important conversation.
And we thank you, uh, Tamika. This is one of many. We wish you the best. Not only we wish you, we will help you the best. So this is the independent black voters as we continue our know your candidates. We hope that you are learning and you are helping and you are formulating a plan to win for the November elections. Uh, we're signing out now. Peace.